Committee of the whole to order, let their record reflect it. It is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. The village clock has it at 6:05 PM. Before we get fully underway here, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve trustee Mueller's request to participate in the meeting by electronic means pursuant to section 30 dot 28 of the village code. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you trustee Mahoney, thank trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
I don't think he can vote on his own.
Very good, that motion will carry. So is that, uh, he can't vote on that?
Yeah, I think he should be marked down as abstaining on that.
Will do.
He's not part of the meeting yet.
Okay.
No notice.
Okay. Now you're in, Mike.
Motion's been approved.
Very good.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number two. Consider approval of the minutes of this committee of the whole meeting held on December 7th, 2021. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you trustee Mahoney, is your second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for item number two, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Item number three, receive audit presentation from Sickich LLP. Brad, go ahead.
Thank you. With us tonight is Anthony Servini with Sickich LLC, who's been our auditor for the past several years and has required under state statutes will make a short summary presentation of our fiscal year 21 audit report.
Thank you Brad, good evening. On behalf of Sickich, I'd just like to take a moment and thank the board for the opportunity to be here, present the results of our audit of the village as of on the full year fiscal year ended April 30th, 2021. Resulting from our audit, we've issued a total of 12 reports, the village's comprehensive annual financial report or annual comprehensive financial report, six TIF examination reports over the village's various tax increment financing districts, our auditors' communication with those charged with governance, the management letter required in compliance with Illinois compiled statutes, as well as the comptroller report, the IMRF allocation report, as well as your other post-employment benefit allocation report. Pleased to present that we've issued unmodified opinions on the village's basic financial statements, as well as what we call in relation to coverage on your combining an individual fund financial statements and schedules. The unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance we can provide as auditors. It means the financials, in our opinion, are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also have issued an unmodified opinion on the village's internal control over financial reporting, required in accordance with the generally accepted government auditing standards, unmodified opinions on your TIF compliance examinations, and then finally, unmodified opinions on the village's allocations related to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, as well as your other post-employment benefit plan. So unmodified opinions across the board there, I do want to commend you for that. Within the audit report itself, within the comprehensive annual financial report, encourage readers of the report to look at the letter of transmittal. This can be found on pages Roman numeral one through 30, as well as the management's discussion and analysis on pages M D N A, one through 14. Letter of transmittal includes a subjective discussion of things that have occurred during the course of the year at the village, as well as taking a look at things that are coming down the pike. Management's discussion and analysis, if you look at nothing else in the report, serves as the executive summary, includes excerpted information from both the 2021 financials, 2020 financials. Most valuable, in my opinion, there is management's explanations for why those figures have changed from one year to the next. Overall, from an operations standpoint, the village's net position increased $12.6 million for your governmental activities. These are your taxpayer-supported funds, your general fund, TIF funds, capital improvements fund, and it had a $538,000 increase for your business-type activities. That was made up of about a million-dollar increase for your water sewer fund, offset by fiscal '21 loss in your commuter parking fund of about $469,000. Your fund balance in your general fund, your main operating fund for the village, increased about $3.5 million. Your capital improvements fund also saw a $6.5 million increase, primarily driven by the timing of the debt issuance and the related capital projects there. From a pension funding standpoint, for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, as of December 31st, 2020, which is the most recent information available from IMRF, village is at 91.8% funded, about a 6% increase in your funded status, and the police pension fund increased about 16% to 85.2% funded. All in all, a very smooth audit for the village this year. Do want to take a moment just to thank staff for all of their efforts and everything. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions? Go ahead Diane.
On the credit card, the new policy, so how are they handling the payment of the credit cards currently? I'm not, I haven't had a chance the first time, I'm saying this, so.
Sure, so we had a, in our audit reports, in our auditors' communication document, there is a, there were two comments related to the prior year, just related to various purchasing, so credit card purchasing is one of those comments there, as well as some of the various escrow deposits that the, that the village has on the credit card policy, credit card procedures generally, and ask staff to correct me if I misspeak here, but generally, there is one credit card that is maintained within the finance department there, and a use of that credit card is approved and run through the finance department.
So do you review all of that? Do you review and test that they're being approved properly?
We test a sample of those transactions there, which we do a purchasing compliance test as part of our audit process to ensure that if there are policies, you know, related to those policies there, credit cards specifically, ensuring that, you know, any policy that is in place there, that we do look through those, verify that on a sample of those transactions, that there's proper receipts, proper approvals, that they're going through that process, correct?
Who's the approvers of the credit cards? Do we see the payments of the credit cards on the, on the AP report?
Yes, we do. The transactions actually appear with the original vendor. They were not, were not reflecting the payment to the credit card, we are paying, we are reflecting the payment to the original vendor. And so they go through the same approval process as any other purchase.
So when we get the payment register, if it has, if it has a vendor listed, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the check that was cut to the vendor? That's actually, it could be a payment to a credit card?
Yes, yes. Yes.
So where do, where do we see the credit card activity?
Well, you can write a card statement.
Well, yeah, but like I say, just where you, where you see the activity is in the, is in the board, in the vendor report that you receive each week with the processing.
And is, is that an okay process to, to be doing with the AP that we're not listing the credit card payments to the, so we don't ever see the credit card payment?
So I think what Brad was trying to say, and I'm wrong, is that on, on the vendor list that we're talking about, you may see, you know, payment to X, payment to Y, payment to Z, and it may not show, it's not going to show, you know, fifth third, fifth third, instead we are, we are showing that this is who the payment was going to, payment to X, payment to Y, payment to Z.
That's correct.
That's how we show it.
From an audit standpoint, then, the essentially taking that information and what's being done is providing actually additional layers of detail there, as opposed to listing out one line item for the credit card payment there, you're seeing that in the respective, I would assume, the, you know, line items that it's going, charged to there for that. So from an audit standpoint, you're actually receiving a, a greater level of detail in terms of the register than you would in terms of just seeing one line for a fifth third payment as part of that.
But there's no board review of these credit card payments? There's only one credit card in the entire village?
Yes.
Correct.
That's correct.
One physical credit card, yes. You receive it every Friday with the vendor report.
The credit card statements? I've never seen.
It's all part of the.
Any, any payment that we have made to the credit card company will, the vendors that were part of that payment will be reflected on the vendor.
But we're not seeing any payments to this credit card company, or any activity on those credit cards?
Again, you are, the report you're getting lists, it doesn't show that we're paying, it doesn't show, you know, fifth third, the credit card, and then just, you know, $5,000 to fifth third. Instead, we're giving greater detail and showing, okay, payments to X company, and, and so yes, you are seeing that. So it may not clarify that it's a credit card payment, but you are seeing that we are making this payment.
But how do I feel comfortable that that credit card is being paid fully?
So you're talking more about the process and it's.
I've never, yeah, I've, I never see any payments going to the credit card. I'd like to see that.
So it's included credit card statements and on top of the vendor report?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned that we're, I've never seen a payment report that has a vendor that really we're not paying that vendor, we're paying the bank.
Again, each transaction is going through the same purchasing approval process as, as any other transaction. The, the, I would, I would view the credit card as no different than, than paying from multiple bank accounts. It's basically another bank account, as far as the transactions are concerned. We are, the approval process for approving a purchase is the same regardless of how the payment is being made, whether by check or by credit card.
I'd like to start getting those every month, the credit card statements, because I don't believe, the board should be reviewing them.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm a little lost as to what value that is.
We can talk about it, but if it's something you.
I'm requesting that we get those credit card statements.
For the sake of moving forward right now, can, can we? Yeah, can we discuss this? Diane, could you discuss this with them?
Sure.
So we can move on to another item here? I just, I don't want to keep him.
Yeah.
But would you guys be able to work that out?
If I could just add one last thing, because I think what you're getting at is process. Very few people have, you know, complete access to the credit card. It's maintained in finance, you have to physically walk over to finance to get it and enter it. Yeah, you sign it out, sign it in. So there's a method of, there's a method behind the madness to using the credit card. It's not like we're just, it's not like everyone has the credit card number saved and can just use it whenever they want. It's, it's not like that, so.
Very good.
Yeah, I just believe the board should be reviewing all payments going on.
We also have to do that where we purchase a 1099. We have to be subject to 1099s in legal vendors on a credit card.
For, for required 1099 transaction?
If there's a transaction that requires a 1099. You don't, you would not be able to issue that properly if we, if the recorded transaction was the credit card company, not the vendor.
Could you pay services on those?
I'm sorry?
You pay, you're paying for services on your credit card? What, what's going on in the credit card that requires a 1099?
I don't know, there is anything, it's just that it.
The potential exists with any transaction that we could have, we could have an obligation.
I can send you a separate email, I'm a little concerned on that process. And how about?
Can you maybe just speak to that again, that we provide greater detail than most people when it comes to the credit card?
Sure, in terms of that, and, and whether or not there's a, I think from an audit process, you know, we're looking at those statements there, we're looking, you know, we start with the statements, you know, and look at transactions there as part of, what are those statements there, and then test from a compliance standpoint to ensure that those amounts that are, you know, if, if it's charged to a particular line item that we're seeing, it go to that line item there. So there are things that are being done on an audit standpoint. Again, you know, to, you know, to Hannah's point, it is something that, you know, the level of detail is there, but you certainly can, you know, understand that there's a process discussion to have, so.
Yeah, I would like that, because it seems like it could be a control issue, somebody could, we're just putting the vendor on there from the statement, I'd like to see that, because it could be anybody's vendor, we're not actually making payments out, right? Or are you making the payment through their, through the AP?
The payment process is the same as, as any other transaction. There's an invoice or a receipt that is received from the transaction, it goes through an approval process, gets allocated to the, to the budgetary line items.
But we're not seeing the payment to the credit card company, ever?
No.
So that.
Not directly.
We're, we're making payments to the vendor, we're making payments to the credit card, but it's not on any of our reports.
It is on the reports, I don't want to say that it's not.
But it's, it's on there for vendors, but I don't see a payment to the credit card company.
If, if you don't mind, let's, let's talk about one of them.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a comment, I just had a question for Brad.
Yes.
So that we're all on the same page. Every single expenditure through the village is the email that you and your staff and Eileen send us on Fridays, correct?
Correct. Any, any payment that is from the.
Whether it's through, however the process, however it's expended, that is all in one email that we get every Friday? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number four, review the mid-year fiscal year 2022 budget.
All right, so before we start, forgive me, I'm gonna try my best to get through this, I'm, I'm not a expert in finance, but obviously, given the circumstances this year, I do have Brad here to support and Eileen as well, if there's questions. I'm sure they'll laugh at me as I try to talk in their finance language about some of these things. So we'll try to keep it high level. It will be a little bit different from years past, it won't be as detailed, given the circumstances, but if there are questions, we'd be more than happy to answer and whatnot. So really just wanted to kind of keep it short, just highlight some main things. So with that being said, first and foremost, we'll just highlight a couple of the funds and sort of year-to-date status. So we'll start with municipal sales tax. You can see that the municipal sales tax, we are 33.5% fiscal year-to-date increase, and this is largely because of the leveling the playing fields tax that was enacted by this, or sales tax legislation, I'm sorry. And so this really required marketplace facilitators and sort of remote retailers to calculate and collect sales tax. So this has been a huge bump and definitely benefiting the village here in regards to the municipal sales tax. In terms of home rule sales tax, eight of the last 12 months reflect new highs, so again, faring very well there, at about 35.1% increase fiscal year-to-date.
And the, and the home rule sales tax typically runs, as a rule of thumb, runs about 41% of the regular sales tax. And again, because of the change in the, in the rules, we're, the partner revenue is capturing more online retailers and outer state retailers now, and not, again, last year they were collecting the use tax, which we, we would receive a portion of that through per capita distribution. This year now, you're, you're receiving that primarily through sales tax based on, mostly on delivery point calculation. And so we've got a big bump in the, in the regular sales tax items. We have a decrease showing up now in the, in the new state because of that change. But I will say, to our benefit, the increase is greater than the loss on the other. So we are definitely advantaged by this change in the reporting requirement, launching a reporting requirement.
So moving on, one thing I wanted to highlight, because it reflects fairly well, video gaming and our revenue that we do receive from video gaming, so out of 39 establishments active for the reporting month, which there is a two-month lag when it comes to video gaming, we're up 140%. You know, there were some shutdowns last year with COVID and whatnot, but I think this just shows some of the bounce back, that despite, you know, COVID, you know, people are out there playing at the video gaming machines, and so we are reaping the benefits of that revenue.
And the monthly revenues, everybody's know, are near, are near the all-time high. They are at the upper end of the, of the spectrum.
And Brad, those, those pay for all of our music in the plaza events and all that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of it's earmarked for a lot of our community events and things of that nature.
Yeah.
Entertainment-related events. Our commuter parking lot fund continues to, month over month, be one of our weakest funds right now. Again, this is largely due to COVID. It's supposed to operate, operate as an enterprise fund, and it just is not doing that. So we continue to have to supplement from our general fund. You look at the dollar amounts, you know, it may not look that large in the grand scheme of things, but if it continues year after year, especially, you know, with the lack of commuters coming back and whatnot, we may have to get creative and find ways to further, you know, reduce costs for this fund. Staff's already done a great job at trying to do so by, you know, implementing lot closures, reducing snowfall contracts, things of that nature. It still, this is not enough. And then, lastly, just to highlight some revenue and expense fiscal year-to-date, you can see that in terms of the general fund, we're at about, you know, 40.4 million in terms of revenue, and our expenses are at about 24.7. Looking at this, I think one thing that I really want to highlight is just, we wouldn't be in the position we're in right now had staff not really buckled down over the last, you know, year, two years, and, you know, I think we made over $20 million in, in budget cuts during COVID and whatnot, and because of that, we are in the position we're in, you know?
We reacted quickly and, and directly to address the, the concerns.
Right. So if you look at this, a lot of it is favorable, you know, we are in a good position. I will say that, you know, we're, we're not out of the woods yet, we continue to monitor things very closely, given the uncertainty of the economy and COVID and new variants and whatnot, but overall, we are in a strong position because of how we reacted quickly at this, at the onset of the pandemic. So that's it, just high overview of, of a couple of the funds and, and revenue, where we're at right now. So moving on to the bond issuance, again, something that I believe everyone is familiar with, but, you know, because it was a recent process that, you know, hasn't been completed in over 10 years, did want to highlight it. I think it shines very favorable on the village. You know, we retained our double A-plus rating, and that was for the refinancing of two GO bonds, as well as the new bond that we will be taking out. So the S and P committee that we presented to did say that they felt that the village is very fundamentally well-managed, that they think we have strong policies in place and well, and good management of those policies, and just overall, you know, good practices and performance. So it really spoke highly of, you know, of village management and, and the way we, we do things around here. So our debt profile remains very strong due to low debt and rapid amortization levels. And then just to highlight, you know, some projects that will likely, where this money will likely be spent fairly quickly, a, a good portion of it will go towards the La Grange Road utility, which includes water main extension, booster pumps, construction, and a lot more, and I know John and his team are happy about that. So this is, you know, this will really help in the area of Loyola and further development in that area. So otherwise, using it to supplement some water main replacement all throughout town that has been delayed because of COVID and lack of funds. I'll let Brad kind of talk to the slides as he.
Thank you. So we sold the bonds on December 2nd. Our municipal advisor, Stefan Roberts, with RW Baird and Company, had noted that since he had made the initial projections for us on the, on the anticipated bond issue, interest rates had started to move, move higher, and about 30 basis points. And the, basically about the week, the weekend before we sold the bonds, you know, was, the market went the other direction with, in reaction to the concerns about the new, the new variant of COVID. And so we were, we were well timed to hit the market and captured that, that drop in rates, that the, the advanced refunding of the 2013 bonds netted a, a net interest cost of 1.67%, which was 20 basis points lower or better than had been projected in the, in the earlier calculations, which means that, I believe it was somewhere over $500,000 save, interest savings, we would, we would realize it's going to be more than that. And we received five bids for the 21A series, the new money, with a net interest cost of 1.56%. And Stefan noted that anything more than three bids is considered a good sale, reflecting, you know, good interest in, in the, in the, in the bonds. It seemed that we got eight and, five and eight bids proposed, submitted. There was a lot of interest in our, in our, in our debt securities. And putting on my historian hat for a moment, these are some of the cheapest interest rates that I have seen in my, since I've been around. It's just incredible. This is great. Great news.
Thanks Brad. Moving on to some of the funding we've gotten from the state and federal governments. In terms of ARPA, we're expecting just over 6.2 million. I believe we received about half of that so far. The CARES funds, we have received that full, and I believe that has already been spent.
That was a reimbursement, that was basically reimbursement from Cook and Will County.
Correct.
So that was, that's, yeah.
And then the Rebuild Illinois funds, 3.7 mil altogether.
And I think we've gotten three installments at this point, so.
We've received a portion, not in full yet. So just kind of as an update, based on the permitted uses of these funds, there's obviously different requirements and whatnot, but these are some of the projects we expect these funds to go towards, you know, post-improvements, you know, a lot of water main, street lighting, sidewalk, you know, PMP, a lot of infrastructure-related improvements overall.
So switching gears a little bit, talking about where we are now with the current budget project, process, we are in full swing of budget season. The departments have all submitted their line items, their capital requests, and their personnel requests to the finance department. The finance department is reviewing those, and we expect to have meetings with the village manager's office and the finance teams here throughout the month of January. The departments were directed to hold the line. Again, you know, we are in a, in a pretty favorable position when it comes to, to the budget right now, but we're not out of the woods yet. Again, we're, there's still uncertainty with COVID and, and the, and the economy right now. So, you know, we told them, no wish list items this year, let's focus on what needs to, what needs to be done and, and get back to, you know, things that may have been delayed because of the pandemic and budget cuts. Just a high-level overview, this is definitely not the entire capital list. Just to kind of give you an idea of the range of projects, you have some that are related to technology, we have a, a large amount of vehicle requests this year, you know, there's some maintenance that needs to be done to some facilities, different infrastructure, you know, some related to tourism, so you'll, you'll end up seeing a lot of varying capital requests per usual, so. In terms of personnel requests, again, the departments were directed to try to hold the line. I, I know right now, we have a lot of, of personnel in progress that our human resources is doing through recruitments, but in terms of new requests, there's only a small amount at this point in time. Again, not a complete list, things are still being finalized and subject to change. So really just wanted to open the floor, again, I know that was kind of a high level, but is there anything in terms of budgeting that you would like staff to be thinking about for next year, any priorities, any projects, any personnel, things of that nature? Want to give you all a chance to let us know whether it's here, you can always follow up with us after the fact.
Okay. Thank you Hannah, great job. Thanks, thanks Brad.
I, I was looking forward to see about, consider that something that's up and coming, and that's the 120th anniversary of our fire department. We have been in discussion with the fire department, with Donna and different things, to try to get a great celebration for the 120th anniversary. We have some thoughts on it already. Committee's already on it.
Anyone else want to add anything to discuss, or you can discuss with the department heads to it a later date, too. Just, is there anything you want to put out here Diane?
I just wanted to see about, are we still going forward with the plaza and all the that's?
With what, I'm sorry?
The plaza, the, you know, music plaza, we're, and we haven't heard anything about that in quite some time.
Yeah, and Paul, maybe that's something that we can give in an executive session update, given some of the litigation.
Sure, I think that'd be appropriate probably after the first year, we'll give the board an update.
We can definitely do that. And we are still trying to obtain the.
I meant with, I mean with the budgeting side, are we?
Absolutely, there's still.
Everything we need in there?
Yes, we're still forecasting, it's in the, you know.
The numbers will be set aside for, for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dennis? Look how you got something on the tip of your tongue.
No, it's good to see a lot of infrastructure work going, so I'm definitely happy about that, everything looks good, you guys did a lot of hard work on this, so I think we all appreciate that.
There, you got anything? All right, very good. Thanks to both of you guys, appreciate your hard work on that. Good presentation. Thank you very much. Item number five, consider amending section 31 dot 105 of chapter 31 of title three of the Tully Park Municipal Code relative to the treasurer. the Tinley Park Municipal Code relative to the treasurer.
This is just a minor change right now in the code. The treasurer is called, it's referred to as treasurer. When we're, when we have vacancies and obviously given our current vacancy in the position, we do try to take a hard look at the positions and whatnot. And really, just long story short, it's more common for municipalities to title the position Finance Director and not Treasurer. I think of Finance Director's duties go far beyond the duties of just the treasurer, you know, as defined in statutory language. So it's really just permitting the position to be referred to in a job description and title and an official capacity as the Finance Director or Treasurer, should we so choose.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
Just want, just to verify, all the requirements currently under Treasurer would just, would stay the same?
Correct, yeah. Nothing's changed.
It's a name change.
Correct, it's solely just the title.
Thank you.
And the amendment actually makes a small change to chapter 31 that says anywhere in our code or in the statutes that has a duty that's required of the treasurer, it will be performed by the Finance Director.
Very good.
So there's no discrepancy in whose responsibility is something is.
Thanks, Brad. Any other questions, Paul? Got to move this item to the village board meeting. Is there such a motion to move this item?
I'll make the.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
All right, you win.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We'll call for item number five, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number six, consider amending section 36 dot 07 of chapter 36 of title three of the Tinley Park Municipal Code relative to authorized depositories and signatories.
I will take that one as well, thank you. Again, just a minor code amendment, you know, kind of given the current situation we're in with, without, you know, Treasurer in place and with Eileen, our Assistant Treasurer, leaving here at the end of this month, it prompted us to look at this ordinance as it relates to signatories to make sure that, you know, the village is fully covered and things continue on smoothly. So it's not, it's common for the village manager to be listed as a signatory. In our case, the village manager just is not currently listed as a signatory. So again, given the current situation, I reached out to Anthony, who actually presented tonight with Sickich, and spoke with the village attorneys, the three of us on a phone call, just to consider adding the village manager, you know, just for continuity of operations, you know, knock on wood, hopefully we're never in this situation again, but just kind of as an extra precautionary measure. And neither of them had any concerns with that. So it's solely just adding the village manager as a signatory in the event the Treasurer decides to designate him as one.
Sure. It makes sense. I think it's a great idea and something that I probably should have done before, but any other question?
Question?
Go ahead, Diane.
I just want to verify that the village manager is not going to be approving the contracts and then signing off on the payments. It would be a separation.
Correct, yeah. And so the way the ordinance is written, it specifically lists the village treasurer, the assistant treasurer, the clerk and the deputy clerk, and then in section D, it says, should the treasurer be absent, I forget the exact language, it's in the packet, but it says, you know, in the absence of, they can appoint the village manager. So even in the line of succession, he's, you know, last case scenario anyways, so.
It's like the succession of presidents. He's there if it's needed, but otherwise, it's the primary positions of clerk and treasurer, it's like Finance Director or their deputies.
Correct. And almost if you look at the situation we're in right now, so we will be without an official, you know, part of my interim treasurer appointment was to maintain the internal controls, but, you know, we'll be without an official treasurer and assistant treasurer, and so we'll just have, you know, the clerk and deputy clerk. So in this case, it would be beneficial because then you'd have the village manager to kind of offset, you know, a village manager and someone from the clerk's office, so.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah.
Bill, I have one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add for the record, I am not on any of the signatories for the expenditure, so we're, everyone's, it's crystal clear. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion to move item number six to the village board?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
We'll call for item number six, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Very good. That motion will carry. Item number seven, consider amending the ordinance for pay scales and fringe benefits established for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2022.
I will give a high level, and if there's any questions, Angela is more than happy to answer. Again, this is first and foremost, clean up to account for changes to the Minimum Wage Act, so it's increasing, you know, minimum wage from 11 to $12 per hour. There's just a few positions in our pay plan that does impact. And then just general clean up with some of the titles and changes that have happened over the course of the past few months since we've last made changes here. For example, you know, pending approval tonight, the Finance Director title being one of them, changing it from Treasurer to Finance Director. So just minor changes of that nature.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions from the board? No, no questions. Is there a motion to move item number seven to the village board meeting?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
We'll call for item seven, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Very good. Motion will carry. Item number eight, consider an exception to section 2 dot 111 of the Personnel Manual, dual capacity employment.
I will take that one as well, thank you.
You've got a busy night, Hannah.
We've had a couple of these requests come forward before. Because of our policy, the board does have to approve dual employment. We do have an EMA member who has expressed interest in being a substitute bus driver. It actually, you know, would really benefit our senior bus program right now, and we are just asking for approval of this.
Yep. Thank you. I think it makes sense. Any questions from the board?
These are both part-time positions.
Correct, yes.
Is there a motion to move item number eight to the village board?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
We'll call for item number eight, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider 2022 village board and committee of the whole meeting schedules. Any questions on this?
This is just our annual approval of the village board and committee of the whole schedules for 2022. It'll be the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, committee of the whole at 6:00, village board at 6:30. And it's, every year we have to approve this, so.
Yep. Very good.
And once it's approved, I'll be posting it all over the place.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions or comments? Laura? Very good. Thank you, Laura. Is there a motion to move item number nine to the village board meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Mahoney. Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
We'll call for item number nine, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item 10, consider a renewed Cook County Assessment Classification 8 for property at 7320 DuVon Drive.
Sure. You know, DuVon Drive is an area that we're constantly trying to see reinvestment, and one of the economic tools we have really right now is the reclassification through Cook County. We have a gentleman here, John, who's owned several buildings in the area, and this is one that the first reclassification is coming due and is looking to renew. Really, unfortunately, the area has not transformed 100%, so we felt it still met the criteria to support that reclass and keep that tax classification to a 10%, which will allow the current tenant to remain there who has expressed concern that they would not be able to absorb an additional rent due to the taxes going up. They've maintained the property well. There are some improvements they're looking to make, which they discussed at ECC, that are some significant improvements due to the age of the building. ECC recommended unanimous approval to the village board to consider the resolution to bring forth to the Cook County assessor.
Very good. Thank you, Kimberly.
Yes.
It was a special area that we had approved, and I know we've submitted documents.
Correct. Good point. I did, I called Ira on that because naturally we have an application in front of us. When our village request for the area has not yet been approved, I've made him aware that I'm concerned that that's been lagging because now we are directly impacting a business. He acknowledged that, claimed or stated he'd be getting work, working on it, acknowledged it was taking longer, but assured me to let this application go forward. And it's been about two weeks since I've talked to Ira, but he's, hasn't noted anything deficient with our application, but recognized there was, there's been some delays, so.
I just was concerned.
Good point, I forgot.
We had to shift this to a six or a seven instead of.
I was advised by Ira to go ahead with the eight on this because I did inquire, yeah.
Perfect. Exactly what I mean.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Very good. Any questions, comments from the board? Nothing? Mayor? Nothing? All right, very good. Is there such a motion to move item number 10 to the village board meeting?
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion, Billy.
Give it to Mueller, he's sleeping over here. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis.
We'll call for item number 10, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number 11, consider an expansion to an existing ground lease and PCS site agreement at 7820 183rd Street.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a simple request and agreement with STC II that currently owns a cellular tower at Post II, which is located off 183rd and Ridgeland. Due to some recent interest in the tower that is there, the leasur is requesting 250 additional square feet added to the adjacent existing premises that will allow for them to pay the village of Tinley Park 30% of the rental received by the tenant. It is a five-year term with extensions, and the village will get an execution of the amended agreement that gives us $27,000 annually from STC II.
Very good.
This is the one by Fire Training Towers, correct?
No, this is the one by Post II, Ridgeland, 183rd. Fire Training Tower is coming shortly.
Where's it wrong at?
7820?
1401.
Where did that say? I'm sorry, where do I see that?
Yeah, that would be closer. That's right by the.
Where are you seeing 7820? Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the memo and backup. Okay, now then, the agenda is corrected. We have that adjusted for Post II. 7820 was supposed to be on this agenda, but they did not finish their documentation in time, so we're only doing this site for this agenda.
Okay.
Did they resolve the other issues with regard to that location, the post certification?
Did they resolve the other issues?
Anyway, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. So what's the, what's the, do we have?
The correct site is Post II, 183rd and Ridgeland.
Okay, okay. So Post II, 183rd and Ridgeland, just make sure that's reflected in the minutes. Is there such a motion to move this item to the village board meeting?
The corrected address.
Yeah, with the corrected address. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Motion for corrected address, trustee Brady.
Yes.
Sorry, we'll call. Trustee Brady is an I. Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan. Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number 12, consider annual maintenance contract renewal for network hardware and software maintenance with Meridian IT, Inc. Anthony?
Yeah, thank you. So this is relatively straightforward.